Welcome to the October 3rd City Council Meeting, Escalon City Council. Please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Hagan?
Here.
Councilmember Ballinger?
Here.
Councilmember Cramick?
Here.
Mayor Protem Swift?
Here.
And Mayor Alz?
Here. All right, this evening, let's see, we're going to start off with a presentation for Citizen of the Month. I would like to call on Paulette Roberson. Is she here this evening? May you come up and give us a little information on who you've selected?
Right here in the microphone, right there. Good evening. I didn't realize I was going to get to say anything, but I am happy to tell you about my friend Toni. She is a giver. She's a caregiver. She's a caregiver giver giver. She helps so many people in so many different ways. If you're her friend or her acquaintance and maybe you have to have surgery and you have to come home a little worse for wear, she'll take you into her home and then just anything that needs to be done, she'll do it. She has helped so many people and she has a little lady now that she puts to bed every evening, cleans her up from the day. She's 87 and she does all of these things without any monetary anything. She just helps out. You need a ride to your doctor's appointment, call Toni. She'll come and get you, take you to the appointment, stay with you. She's just a wonderful person and a wonderful friend. We walk every day because walking is so healthy for you and we talk every day and she's a wonderful friend as well as a wonderful helper giver person.
Thank you very much. All right. Well Toni, we have a certificate. I'm going to go ahead and read it and I'll present it to you. It says, "This certificate of special recognition and is awarded to Toni Rose in parentheses Vance Bronson. I commend you for your outstanding dedication, commitment, volunteer time to the community. The city of Escalon believes that it is important to honor and acknowledge those people who contribute to the community and make it a better place to live. You are a committed, caring person who will drop anything to help their neighbor, friend, or stranger and we can only hope to leave such an imprint on the city as you have." All right, Mayor Alz, and now I will bring you your certificate and a medal for the city. There you are and thank you for being a good person.
You could be in trouble.
Thank you very much for this wonderful recognition. I never expected it, of course. I just lived in Escalon. It's a very nice, friendly community. Moved here in 75 and so you get to see the boys grow up and the families and we're very happy that our neighbors, we moved to the same neighborhood together. We've been friends for a while. But now that we're retired, we're finding more and more friends. So the Escalon Senior Fund Bunch has been meeting monthly for over a year now and we've been participating for just about 10 months and we've been having a great time with those people. And so I would encourage anybody in Escalon to come the 3rd Wednesday between 2:00 and 4:00 to our community center. We even sometimes play bingo. Thank you, Robert. And so we have this next forum, I think will be for the candidates that are running for our city council positions. So it's not all just fun and games. We can get down to some business too. Thanks again for this recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well deserved.
Congratulations.
Okay, our next item on this agenda this evening is the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mayor Alz, regarding item number two, I'll be abstaining from voting on check number 9884.
Okay, and then you want to pull three and talk about it or anybody want to pull three and talk about it? More guy?
I'm okay with that.
You're just going to vote?
Unless you want to...
I want to talk about it. I'll pull number three. All right, so we have 1 and 2 to vote on right now. I'll take a mo— I'll accept a motion.
Motion?
Motion for 1 and 2. Do you have a second?
Yeah, a second for 1 and 2.
We have a second. Very good. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Kerry's 5-0. Good. All right, item number 3, the building code. I went over the building code and I was looking at it and they're adding...
Mayor, hold on. Item 3 is the city's conflict of interest code for...
Oh, no, the wrong one then. Slow it.
If that's the wrong one, we can go ahead and take a separate vote on it. That'd be fine.
I'll move to approve item number 3.
Okay, we missed that. Okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Kerry's 3-0. Okay. Where is that thing?
That's going to come up on the public hearing.
Okay, good enough. We'll do it then. All right, good enough. All right, let's move it on to staff communications, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We have one report that is regarding the San Joaquin Council of Governments Citizens Advisory Committee Quarterly Update, which covers the months of April, May, and June. And that is submitted by our representative, Gracie Marks. If you have any questions on that, we could— and then we—if not, we do have some staff communications I'd like to get into.
Any questions for staff?
I have no question on the report.
Okay.
All right. Do you have any updates to give first?
Before we go there, do we want to ask anybody else if they have any questions or do we...
We can— well, we'll go into matters presented to the audience after.
Okay.
Yeah. Do either of you have any items?
I do not.
Just wanted to make sure before I take up all the time here. So I have a couple of updates. A few meetings ago, council provided consensus to update training policies for council members. We were able to locate an ethics policy that was adopted by this council in 2019. However, we have created the language to update for training, but there are a couple other areas that we'd like to put additional updates on. And so I would like to bring that back to the council after the November election to kind of start a clean slate on all trainings and things moving forward. And so I just wanted to advise you that we won't have that coming until November to December and then make sure that was okay with everyone. And then also, council provided consensus to staff to put on the future agenda, sales tax discussion. So sales tax discussion would be for the November 2024 ballot, which is two years away. I would also like to have that presented to council sometime in January. We should have some additional staff by then and be able to move forward on getting all of those items together, which will give us plenty of time to move that forward for And then an update regarding the city and school, 2+2 school district, meeting with our school district. That has been tentatively scheduled for Thursday, October 12 at 8:00 a.m. at the school. They're still checking with their board members. It's not a normal date that it's on and so...
You know what time that'll be?
8:00 a.m. at the school. And I will send up a follow-up email as soon as we hear back from their board members that they're able to attend. And so that'll be our next meeting with the school district. And the last item I have is regarding Brennan and 120. I know that we had a collision at that location last week or a few days ago. The last time we had a collision at that location, staff moved forward with contacting Caltrans and setting up meetings to discuss issues at that intersection. We do know it's a sensitive topic for the community and as well as the council. So I did reach out to Caltrans and advise them that there was a collision there. They were very open to moving forward with doing some type of study since there's a collision. They're going to move forward with obtaining that police report and use it from there to conduct a safety investigation and a traffic safety—a traffic collision warrant study. So those items, they have let us know that they would move forward on and those are the first steps to reevaluating that area to see if it meets the criteria for a signal.
You might want to mention to them the potential growth there in that corner.
I have in the past. That they have mentioned is development related. They won't look at it in terms of a project until they know— confirm what the project is, but at this point, because there was a collision, that does trigger them to open an investigation and study. So we did reach out.
Yeah, because that should sway it right there, I think, that alone. The two together should do it.
Yeah, and it will be one of those things where if or when that project moves forward, it'll be triggered to do it again. And so they might do it and have it done by the end of this year and then if that project comes in, they'll end up redoing it to apply that development project to it.
Okay, good enough.
So I did want to provide that update to you, that we have been in communication with them.
Okay. Ready to move on to matters presented from the audience? The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum five minutes. Unused time is not— will not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is a discretion decision made by the mayor. Okay, is this an opportunity for anybody? Oh, you're already up there. Okay, very good. Can we have your name, please?
Good evening, fellow council members and city manager. Thanks for your time and consideration for hearing and addressing my concerns. My name is Richard Govea. I have been a hard-working resident for 30-plus years in the city of Escalon. I love this town and wholeheartedly respect and support our city officials, police officers, and all first responders. I would like to address the situation that was brought up in the Escalon residents group on Facebook. All this may— although this may seem to have the appearance of a personal disagreement, I believe it is far from it. I believe this will affect or has possibly affected the whole community. This conversation was in regards to this new smoke shop being painted that horrific green. It was the communication between our city manager, Mayor Ed Alz, and the other residents that were concerned about the color it was painted and some had expressed disappointment that it was allowed. One resident asked Ed Alz if it was against the city ordinance to paint this building this color or if permission was needed. Ed Alz responded, quote, "I don't know what's prohibited, but I know we have a strict ordinance." My response to Ed's post in regards to this was, quote, "As mayor, you mean to tell the people you don't know what's prohibited in the ordinance? It's time you get strutting because we need leaders who know what the ordinance states." His response back to me was, quote, "Richard, normally I wouldn't waste my time responding to you, but since I do know you, I realize you don't know much about what council members do or don't do. If you would like to be educated and understand what it is we do and what we're responsible for and what we should know versus what you think we should know, I'd be happy to explain it to you. Very disappointed that you would make a statement so uneducated as the one you just did. I thought much more of you until now, but feel free to contact me personally. I'll be happy to explain to you face-to-face like men." I did not contact Ed. He called my—and left a message on my phone that evening and this is what he stated, quote, "Richard, I read your post and I think it's pretty insulting. Give me a call. I want to talk to you. I would like to talk to you face-to-face because you really have some delusional ideas as to what council members do and mayors do. You have no clue what we do, so I would like to explain it to you so you don't make any more statements that are more uneducated than the last one you made." This quote, however, does not serve justice to the tone and demeanor and how he addressed me. I believe any citizen has the right to be treated with respect and dignity, with professional manners. A citizen should never be approached or told to in a tone or manner that they are subordinate to their leaders. This is a form of intimidation and I will not stand for it, nor should anyone else in Escalon. I do understand that this point is regarding— excuse me—I have a copy of the Code of Ethics that the office—that the officials sign when they are elected into office. I would like to read bullet point 3 regarding conduct. The professional and personal conduct of officials, employees, and volunteers must avoid the appearance of impropriety. Officials, employees, and volunteers shall listen courteously and attentively to all discussions before the city council. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, abusive conduct, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other officials, employees, or the public. They shall be respectful of others' diverse opinions and allow for the debate of issues. They shall respect efforts by the mayor or other chairperson to focus discussion on current agenda items. I do not understand—I do understand that this point is regarding council meeting— city council meetings and how we are to conduct ourselves. However, when one reads this statement, one would think in our small town, we love that these codes of conduct are the very act of being civil towards one another in public. I would like to request a personal apology from Ed Alz, our city mayor. I believe that my community, our community, and other council members would ask the same if spoken to in such an unacceptable manner. Thank you for your time and service to the residents of Escalon. May God bless you all.
If you want an apology, I'll accept one from you as soon as you give me one. How about this fact that you get on there and you're starting to make demeanor—I mean derogatory statements and you want me to apologize? I'm trying to educate you so you don't make those type of statements that are so wrong. I mean, why would you do that? Why would you come after me for something? Why?
Okay. Why? Why is— when you answer...
Excuse me, sir. I realize—the—I realize the mayor responded, but we can't get back and forth and I'm going to ask for both.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. All right. Next, please.
Good evening, mayoring and fellow council members. I'm here this evening. Dominique already pretty much covered it. I appreciate your work on that and getting a heads up on it because Brennan and 120—I live in that area and I would like to see a light there. I'm going to work my butt off to get Caltrans to get one at Van Allen as well. It's important that people slow down. Our kids go to Van Allen. It begins at Brennan and Irwin and Walnut and I believe there is only—how far does the double lane go to? There's not—there's only one at Irwin and then past that, there isn't. I fear my life every time I might get on 120 and want to turn left anymore. I don't do it. I go down McHenry. It's only a matter of time. Six years ago, we had someone pass away at that intersection. They came forward on Facebook. The fatality didn't change Caltrans' mind, so I am asking you guys tonight for a consensus to—I want support from you guys, a letter, something, and I know we have staff on it. I totally appreciate that, but I want something saying that our government is backing us and we want something there. We want something to change for our residents. And this—just to become—I mean, the traffic that flows through there, I'm glad they're doing a study. I did speak with Caltrans, I believe his name was Gary. He said he was going to start the study and all that, so I'm glad the ball's rolling, but I want you to know that it's not—I'm here, I'm saying it's a concern for me. I know some of you have family members that live very close to me that have that same concern, so I just—I just want that to be looked at and taken very seriously because the last time I came up to the council was to get a speed bump on Stanislas and there was one put on Yosemite. So I still think we should look at one on Stanislas as well and that's within your guys' reach. So whatever means necessary, I'll be here in two weeks to make sure that we have some type of follow-up, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, what can we do here?
Well, we've reached out to Caltrans regarding the traffic study, so that's going to take some time. It doesn't hurt that we can put together some type of letter to support that. We can do that and forward it over to them as...
Okay. I think we've done that in the past.
We have, yes.
Okay.
And yes, the collision, the last one, was about six years ago. In regards to a speed bump on Stanislas, I would need direction.
Okay, well, isn't that part of the other thing we'll be discussing tonight too?
That one is a request for one on Deborah, correct?
So would we want that to come more formally through like this when did?
Agenda item request would be good.
I think so. Okay, very good.
You can put it on a future agenda for discussion.
I would like to put it on an agenda for future discussion. Can I have a second for that?
Well, I have a question. I understand that typically the council's not supposed to be responding during matters presented from the audience. I'm just wondering if maybe if one of us were to bring it up under council communications, would that be appropriate?
Okay, we'll do it then. I just want to make sure that gets covered.
I have a question. We're going to have that housing go behind us on California. I'm Elizabeth Bennett on California. But on the other side, aren't we going to have that manufacturing that's going to have about 100 people also working there, which will also add to that? That machine—that machine shop that's supposed to go in there and he's going to have 40 at the start and want it to go to 100. Then we have 57 homes going there, so we're going to have traffic on both sides coming out there.
Neither of them have submitted an application yet and so the applications submitted with the city is what triggers anything moving forward.
There you go.
We have to wait for the applications to come in before we can move.
Counsel, Sean Strowman. I'm not shy about this. I'm sharing this publicly. As you all know, I'm a candidate for city council and I believe that—I'm sharing this across the board, but I believe that a traffic study on Brennan and 120 is only solving one problem. I've heard from many constituents during my campaign that we have many, many issues related to Caltrans throughout the city. Brennan and 120 is only one issue. The other issue is the excessive speed right near Almond Grove. The residents of Almond Grove are trying to get in and out. The excuse that they're hearing is Caltrans, Caltrans, Caltrans. My request to the city is rather than wait for Caltrans to do the study, let's schedule a town hall meeting with the District 5 Caltrans engineer here in Escalon so he can actually—he or she can actually hear from our citizens. That way, we can address the many issues related to Caltrans, not just one issue. There are multiple issues related to Caltrans. I've been here for 15 years and the excuse I always hear is Caltrans. Well, if Caltrans is the problem, let's bring Caltrans here and talk—have Caltrans talk to our citizens. Just a request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, finally, I get to meet everybody. This may affect a city council. I don't have anything in regards to the Caltrans or anything. I'm glad something's being done. Let me introduce myself. Good evening, everybody. Now I'm getting faces with names now and that's nice. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Phyllis Govea and I'd like to sincerely thank each and every one of you for your service and long years of dedication to keeping this community safe and good. I've resided here for eight years with my husband, Richard Govea. Although I've not attended a city council meeting, I have been involved in other government affairs. My main involvement is praying for our city officials and first responders. That's my main thing here. I still must say, even though I may not like a person or what they do in city council, I still must respect their position. And so that's why I continue to pray for people, even though I may not agree with their views or whatever. Personally, I would like to say, "Good evening, Mr. Ed Alz." And if there is unforgiveness in anybody's heart, I'm going to remind everybody of what needs to be done. In order to be forgiven, we must forgive. Forgiveness is not for the other person. It's for your soul and for your happiness and for your joy. If that person chooses not to forgive, that's their choice. But in order to remain peaceful and in a loving condition in your heart, you need to ask for grace to forgive a person, no matter if they ask for it or don't. That's how I feel it should be done. I understand the dedication and time and commitment it takes to be a city council member and I sincerely thank you for all the energy and work that you do to keep our small town great. It'll cease being great when it ceases being good. That's an old quote, misquoted often, but I love it. And the failure for evil—the thing—the evil prevails for the failure of a good man or woman to do nothing. That is so true. So let us work together to be kind, respectful, and loving towards one another, helping and aiding each other to educate ourselves, to grow into love and the fullness of spiritual stature, as well as residential respect and an outshining light to the other communities around us. That's my goal. I would like to propose an agenda—one item for agenda meeting, but first, I would like to tell you what I love about Escalon. When I go out and shop in any of the stores or walk along the streets, I take—I don't hear foul language, fighting, people brawling, or drunkenness. I don't see gang bangers on every corner. I don't see kids and gang bangers and drug members selling dope. I don't hear gunshots right over the top of my house. I don't have my car tagged with unsightly words. I don't have bullets come right through my house. I don't see graffiti downtown or in town often. These things I say to you, I am so grateful to live here because I lived in that environment in West Modesto. When I moved here eight years ago, I was so very grateful because I had lived in a small farming community in File Rito and it was about this size and I loved it. I was so very grateful to come here and I'm—I hope that with this election, everybody can come into one accord, call a solemn assembly, and maybe—I might suggest—I'm not saying separation of state and whatever, but in our small town, maybe you should call a solemn assembly and pray together. That's only a suggestion. With that being said, I would like to thank you very much. I would like to propose on the agenda for next month's meeting, if these things are not resolved, that possibly with the Code of Ethics that are in place, if there's not an enforcement being done or an examination thereof that we may get done on there. I was very pleased to hear that there's further educational material coming forth for our council members and our leaders, which is important, and I look forward to being involved in the community. I have been involved in the community, so I love this town and that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Dean. My name is Don Bennett. I live on California Street. Attending to Brennan and 120, I—I don't think we—we're going to get a light there, but maybe we could get a turning lane because there's no lane to turn into to make a right or a left turn. And how many people have to die there before we get one? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not sure. I know this is supposed to be on the administrative matters. My wife's Chrissy Burton, so I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about this right now or...
What is it?
This is the next item.
Sway. Do you do it at the time?
Yeah.
We do it at the time. Yeah, you have to wait till item 6 is called.
Got it.
You'll be good to go. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, counsel and staff. My name is Larry Grassi. I just have a question about empty lots that are here in town. We did have a problem with—on Irwin Street where that house had burnt down, where the old—not lumberyard, the livestock auction used to be. So I'm talking about that type of lots that are around town, especially the ones that have real estate signs on them. Is there—is there a code that does not have to be triggered by a citizen's complaint to take care of the weed problem? to be triggered by a citizen's complaint to take care of the weed problem on these lots? There's, there's weeds higher than the signs in some places. And I know, Mr. Alves, I know you know where one of them is because of the sign that was down. Now it's up. I don't know. Is there a way of maybe quarterly somehow getting these people to take care of their property? And maybe even just the real estate agents, you know, maybe taking care of the property for the clients if they are out of town? It's just a question.
Sure. So currently, yeah, we are on a code enforcement complaint basis. However, when it's come to re-abatement, we typically start putting out letters in January, February, depending on how rainy the season is. We usually have the same offenders over and over, and it's a process. And so we get to that point where we post for abatement, and then they'll clean up the lot. And so for most of the lots, it's waiting until the very, very last minute.
Well, maybe, maybe we can look at doing some sort of a fine, because if, if we want properties to turn over in this town and not just sit there with a real estate sign and go through this procedure all the time, maybe a fine needs to be put in place to where maybe they look at this and say, you know, maybe we need to sell it. I don't know. Just a suggestion. I, you know.
We can't really do much. We can't say anything now. We're-
No, I understand.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks for input. All right. Anyone else like to come up?
Good evening. I'm Kaylee Seagull. I live on California, next to these fine people right here next to me. I can actually see the intersection from Brennan and 120 from my master bedroom window. It is very busy most of the time. I drive to Van Allen. That's my kid's homeschool. I have been driving there for six years, two times a day for drop-off and pickup. It is dangerous. I am so surprised we haven't lost more people at those intersections, at Van Allen and both Brennan. Driving from Escalon to Ripon, Brennan is the only full intersection with a four-way that does not have a turn lane. Every other one has at minimum a turn lane. So I appreciate your guys' proactivity on trying to get whatever we can done, but I'm here with Jamie, and we're going to try to get this done for the kids of the future. Mine will be out of Van Allen here shortly, but there's many more to follow behind. And I know as there are going to be houses built behind my house here probably in the next five years, and all of those kids I'm trying to help protect. So, thank you.
Suggestion. My wife doesn't go on Brennan or the other one. She goes around to the light.
Yeah, I know.
She's freaked out with him, too.
I don't have that much time in the morning. I'm rushing.
Okay. Good enough. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearing. Waive the second reading and adopt ordinances number 30, amending EMC Chapter 15 Building and Construction by adopting by reference to California Building Standards 2022 Edition Title 24 of the State of Cal, for the California Code of Regulations with Amendments and Other Uniform Codes. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. This item was on the last agenda for the waiving of the first reading and setting of the public hearing. Tonight, we are requesting waiving of the second reading to conduct that public hearing, and then to adopt ordinance amending the Escalon Municipal Code Chapter 15 Buildings and Construction by adopting reference to the California Building Standards 2022 Edition Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations with Amendments and Other Uniform Codes. This, this is the triennial, triennial update of the building code. It happens every three years. The objective is to produce a practical building code that ensures public safety first and foremost while implementing the most efficient technology available to conserve the state's natural resources and energy use. The California Building Code applies to every commercial and residential structure in the state. The new CBC California Building Code contains 12 parts that incorporate public health, life, safety, and general welfare standards used in the design and construction of buildings in Californias. The Health and Safety Code, Section 18941.5 mandates that building standards contained in the 2022 California Building Code shall become effective 180 days after publication by the California Building Standards Commission. If these codes are not adopted by ordinance, they become effective by default without any amendments. As discussed in the last meeting, the main noteworthy updates are listed in the staff report. We also ran the 65-page document that reviewed all of the additional updates or things that would be changing in this code, which include the extension of building permits from six months to 12 months, aging in place design and fall prevention for new residential construction, and expanding electric vehicle charging requirements to install EV charging receptacles and chargers to new multifamily dwellings, hotels, and motels. And the proposed effective date for these ordinance amendments is January 1, 2023. And as a part of the adoption process, this department has made every effort to notify all affected parties in those proposed changes. And so we do have the ordinance before you. We also have our building official on the line, Mike Brinkman with CSG Consultants, if you have any additional questions.
I'm going to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing is now open. If there's any questions or concerns you'd like to address at this time, please come to the podium. We're talking about the upgraded building code for the UBC, I believe. It is Title 24.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Sean Strowman. I just want to clarify one thing that I mentioned in my comments regarding this item at the last meeting, specifically to Councilman Kromick. It was the impression that was given at the last meeting that this was a State of California mandate that was being pressed down to cities and municipalities. For full transparency and disclosure, I had a subsequent follow-up, follow-up conversation with Councilman Kromick, and I want the rest of the council to understand that this building code actually comes from, it's not the State of California. The Building Code Committee comes from chief building officials, and they're, and they're, well, they're representatives from architects, engineers, contractors, construction managers, chief building officials. So it's a consortium of people in the construction industry that propose and vet out these building code revisions. So it's not necessarily the State of California, big brother, if you will, trying to push these onto smaller municipalities. It's actually people within the construction and building trades industries who are trying to improve the quality of buildings related to fire, life, safety, energy efficiency. And I mean, it could go on and on and on. So I just wanted to make sure that that point was clear. I kind of went off the other way last week, last meeting. I wanted to steer back so that you knew that this wasn't the State of California, but rather it was people in the building industry itself. So just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Is anyone else? All right. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Phyllis. Thank you for hearing me. I just have a question. This may sound silly, but this code, these codes that we're adapting, please clarify for me, the electric charged vehicles and those kind of things, because there are going to be codes. Is that something that's going to be enforced upon our city to install these things?
In the new construction?
New construction. In any new construction?
You'll have to have a charger for your electric vehicle that you probably never will buy your own, but yes.
Thank goodness. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Can I say something?
Absolutely. Let me close it first. Is there anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else. Is anyone on the internet or on the phone who'd like to add something? Okay, hearing no response. We're going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Go ahead.
My concern with these is that these are things that private citizens should be making decisions on for their own house. You know, I mean, if you want a charger in your house or not, you're making a sweeping policy on private property is my concern. If you need something in your house, you can put it in your house. So it is concerning when you see things that are labeled with the words mandating. To me, I mean, when I see mandate, that means that as far as I'm aware, it hasn't gone past legislation. So legisla-, correct me if I'm wrong, but has this passed, this, is it the legislative branch saying, "Hey, this is law"? Because it's not saying law.
Yeah, it gets, it's, it's not state statute, but it's state regulation. So the regulations are adopted basically through legislation that says, California Code of Regulations has tons of different titles and documents. One of them includes Title 22, which were this, or Title 24, where the building codes are adopted. So they are adopted. They're, they're different than executive fiat, right, or executive mandate, but it's not state statute either. It's kind of in between.
You just, I don't know, when I, when I look at that, it makes me cringe a little bit, because it, this is someone, basically, like you said, Sean, it's a group of people that are coming together deciding what's right for someone else's private property. You know, so I get it when you're talking about public spaces, but when you're talking about someone's private home, like, at what point does that line the sand stop? Eventually, there, you know, you, you continue to, to put more and more and more pressure on the individual at their home till eventually, you know, you're making no decisions on your property. And it just doesn't make sense to me.
Anyone else?
Yeah, question. I think it's primarily dealing with new construction, correct, versus retrofitting older, I'm sure there's some provisions that deal with retrofit, but isn't this primarily new construction?
Mike, would you like to respond to this, please? Turn on your mic on your end.
Picture was there for a minute.
It's there, yeah.
It was. A lot of times what they do, Councilman Swift, is when you go to get a permit to do something, sometimes they'll tie those together. They'll make you do additional work based on your permit. I've seen that in the industry before. But I don't know the answer on this one.
No. Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, Title 22 covers plumbing code, electrical code, fire code, building code, existing building code, historical building code. It covers a lot of different building codes.
I thought Title 24 was about energy cals, too.
Yeah, there's a California, yeah, there's the green energy code.
That's what Title 24 is. It's mostly about energy.
I think it covers all sorts of building codes.
Is it?
Yeah, all sorts of what they call the uniform codes.
Okay.
Which covers all the different trades. But I guess what I would say too quickly, because the expert is not able to chime in, so I'll do my best. But bottom line is, every time you're going to either do new construction or reconstruction or renovation, and like Mayor pointed out, if you need a permit or those types of things, it is going to trigger some of those requirements.
Right.
So it's kind of like the ADA law, right? A lot of old buildings aren't required to be under ADA, but as soon as you want to retrofit it, you've got to get in compliance with ADA.
And it's been my understanding, and just Mr. Strowman's point, I talked to my cousin, too. He does an awful lot of, you know, he does a lot of design work, buildings, something like that, and talked to him about the code, and he basically reiterated what you said in terms of where this code originates, originates at. And it's a reflection of, you know, the most modern building standards, things that you find, you know, down the road. Hey, gee, we should, maybe we need to improve it this way, maybe we need to improve it that way. You know, to me, I know that the question has been out here, gee, do we adopt it or do we not? And ultimately, it really doesn't matter. I think the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is I really don't want to be throwing a red flag or throwing any mud to the developer or to the developers or builders that are going to come to our town. So they're going to be looking at one code, same code every town. I believe most every town the state adopts it. You know, it's more administrative thing more than anything else.
Well, whether you agree with it or not, it's going to be law.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, and I guess what I can say is the code that I think that this, this city's adopting, at least from a builder developer perspective, they're not, the city's not making a bunch of customizations to it. Then it makes the developer or, or property owner even more confused, because they come to Escalon, and there's a whole, another separate rules. So at least there is, there is predictability in the uniformity, which is, can we go?
The uniform building code.
The way we're presenting it is, is the minimum standard. You can, you can restrict more. Cities can apply additional restrictions, but we're not supposed to go below the minimum, and this is the minimum.
I guess my, well, my concern is that here, this is, you're saying this is law? Or is this a mandate? Because a mandate is not law.
So, yeah, I know where you're, I think I, yeah, I, I do. I think I understand where you're coming from. This, the, it's not a mandate like some of, I hate to bring up the word, but like COVID, remember the COVID? Remember the last two years? And those were mandates. Those were executive mandates by governor's emergency authority. I'll just leave it there. I won't comment too much on it. But I'll just say that those have the force of executive orders that are probably similar to mandates, and I'm guessing what you're thinking of. These, yes, and then you have state statutes where it's at the opposite end, where the whole, the legislature, California legislature has to pass it and vote on it, and the governor has to sign it, the whole legislative process. These are regulations. So essentially, what they are is the state says California Standards Building Commission, it's like, it's a whole working group, you create the regulations, and you update them every three years. So they're not, they're not passing the law every three years in the legislature. They're, but the California Standards Buildings Commission is adopting the regulations pursuant to that legislation every three years. So, I mean, the best way I can put it, it's kind of in between, right? It's, it's, it's kind of like a committee that's doing it, so to speak.
Which by default means it doesn't go with the Constitution, right? If it's not being voted on by legislative branch and then amended by the executive branch or, or confirmed by the executive branch, if there's an issue between the two, then it goes to the judicial, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's a little more complicated than that, but I hear what, I mean, hear what you're saying. I think your, your comment's a good one. I think at the end of the day, this is an area that has not been challenged, right? So the courts haven't ruled on it. So, you know, it's, 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 it's a little more complicated as far as, you know, whether it's that type of issue.
Dominique?
Gotcha. You, you said that if, if it's not adopted through an ordinance like we're trying to do, by default, it is adopted. I think that's what you said, right?
Correct.
So for certain council members that don't, like, you know, Councilman Hagan, like myself, that don't like to just adopt, you know, and agree with everything that comes down from the state for, for whatever reason, if we abstain from voting on this, it's still going to go into effect.
It would go into effect by default, and the only thing that would be affected is that our building officials or inspectors wouldn't be able to use any of the appendix chapters that are in the back of the codes. Those just help with like enforcement backup. And so I had inquired with our building official about that prior to the meeting. And those are really helpful to staff, especially staff that's, that's working with us. And so-
If we don't adopt it as a-
Make urgent adoption because we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have those appendices to be able to-
Right, and I get it. This is the bare minimum, and they're going to enforce it anyways, so everybody just say yes and move along. But it's, it does go to Andy's point about, because at what point does it stop? Where the, the state just sends down things? What if they say, okay, now you need four, you need two charging stations. You can't own a gas vehicle. You have to have an electric vehicle to plug into this electric outlet that we said you have to build, and you've got to put solar panels on. You have to have slip and fall and rails all over your house, and no more pools, because people drowned in them. You know, it just goes on and on. At some point, somebody's got to take a stand. And in a small way, by we saying, "No, we're not going to adopt this," I think that's Andy's thinking. That's my thinking. But I don't want to screw the contractor and have, you know, our code not necessarily aligned with it. So if we abstain, it's going to go into effect anyways, right?
If you abstain and there's a majority that approves it, so if it was like the last vote where it was a 3-2, it would still move forward. If it ends up not passing and you abstain and it fails, it would be adopted and go into effect January 1, but those appendices would not be able to be utilized.
And if, and just to clarify, if we voted it down 3-2, and it, it's not adopted, what happens?
Vote it down, it's not, it would, it would just go into effect in January.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it just, it just makes things a little, a little bit more difficult on the code, on the code enforcement action in terms of the building inspector. There's certain appendices that they refer to, to address certain situations on, on building permits, and we wouldn't be able to refer to those because they're a part of the adoption, and those ones are the, they're, they're just additional things to refer to in, in special scenarios.
So we're making his job harder because our code doesn't align with the California Building Code?
I don't necessarily, I'm not sure it would make their job harder, is it would just be a different, a different route than what they're doing other places.
What would be in these new appendices that isn't in the ones that are there now? What is it, the additional new code?
Let's see here. And these appendices.
I mean, what is it, we're, what are we cutting out if we didn't agree to it?
The only information I had was that they were more enforcement- The only information I had was that they were more enforcement-based. Um, if we go through the chapter, adopting codes by reference, um, chapters, they have some additional appendices, um, like the part two of Title 24, volumes one and two, which includes scope and administration. There's appendices H, I, J, and P, uh, that are based on the 2021 edition. Specifically, I'm not, I'm not going to be able to answer what what those specifically refer to. Um, wish we could.
I mean, I, yeah, and Mike's probably the best person to answer this. I would just say from my experience, this mostly matters that relate to the administration of of the building code and all the rules regarding processing of permits and potentially if if a, if a, if a developer or builder wants to question the authority, sometimes they disagree with the building official's interpretation of the code. There's a process they can use to dispute that. So it really relate to a lot of, I'm guessing, or not guessing, but I I know at least a good chunk of what we're talking about is administrative, real things related to the implementation of the code. Like I said, appeals, questions to clarify, um, uh, scheduling, because, you know, permits can only last so long, that kind of thing.
So if I'm, if I understand right, if I was a builder and I knew that the Escalon City Council did not adopt the triennial, uh, you know, update, and I built something and the building inspector came out and wanted to, uh, enforce something, I would have an easier ability to go and, what's the word, uh, challenge that, right?
Yeah, I don't know. I think it would make it harder, actually, in my opinion. I I see your point, but I think it cuts both ways because then the developer doesn't have, know what his recourse is and his due process is to challenge it. And so it actually gives the city or the building official probably a little arbitrary amount of, um, decision-making as opposed to having the procedures in place and writing. I see your point, but I think it does kind of cut both ways.
Well, they could always come and just appeal it, come to the city and go, how do I appeal this? And they have to tell them how to go through an appeal process.
Yeah, but I mean, who determines what that appeal process is? Because the rest of the code, like, the code enforcement appeals process may not apply. We need a code section to say what what process applies. Do you appeal the city council? Do you plead, appeal the? All right.
I have our, I was able to have our building official call in on our, on the phone. Um, Mike, would you be able to explain a little bit more about the appendices, please?
They're just specific chapter topics, um, like patio covers or grating or straw bale hay, hay construction. If someone wanted to build a straw bale house, just give some more specifics on how to regulate those types of, uh, applications. The main bulk of the code is, in fact, it's just more specialized topics that are the appendix chapters to help.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I have, yeah, I have.
I want to say something first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The problem I'm having with these code changes is this. California is complaining we don't have enough housing. At the same time, they're making housing costs extremely expensive. So there's a dilemma here. So do we build houses that are affordable for people to have homes? Or do we keep adding more cost onto the homes so we can't build them? That's my dilemma. And I'm tired of additional things on people's houses. We can't afford to be housing this down for the seniors because the cost is so prohibitive. So it frustrates me to see these new codes come out and increase the cost instead of trying to mitigate a way to build homes for people that want, you know, affordable cost. I mean, it's just not, it's just contradictory to what we're trying to do. So it is very frustrating.
If I make a, make a comment, um, you know, trying to think of where to begin here. Personally, I'm just not willing to, and I respect the gentleman, you know, council members, the mayor's points, very well taken. There's a lot of issues that frustrate all of us with the state of California. I'm just not too sure if this is the one that we want to do a donkey hotel on, you know, going out of the state, where there are many issues that we do have an issue with the state of California, that we have ample backing, like with the League of California Cities, other groups like that, that will strengthen numbers, we can actually found a decent fight. The problem with this one is that, again, there's a consortium of industry officials regulating this. Um, and you feel a little better about that versus somebody sitting in an office in Sacramento that has no knowledge of the building industry or anything like that. I deal with a similar industry. Um, it's a pest control industry, and that industry, like I say, they'll, they'll come out with new regulations. That's why we have to do continuing education. And a lot of those new regulations are based on new things coming out, new technologies coming out, just like, just like with this. And often, those regulations are not a bad idea. If they want you to wear spray spray gloves and a whole body suit because the chemical that you're using is going to give you third-degree burns otherwise, it's probably a good idea. The biggest reason that I think I'm in favor of adopting these tonight is I do not want to put our contractors, our staff, our engineering department in the crossfire under such, you know, if we decide not to adopt these. And so that's the main reason why, like I say, I I support adoption tonight.
Any more discussion? You guys have any more discussion? Okay, it's going to come to a vote.
Well, I'd like to move on staff's recommendation.
Before we do that, there is some interest in in that, then. Can we bring this back to the public if we, before we vote?
I mean, you closed the public comment, so you probably.
Or beyond it.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, go ahead. What was your comment?
Oh, yeah, I move on staff's recommendation, uh, to adopt, uh, EMC Chapter 15, Building and Construction by adopting the reference, by reference, the California Building Standards 2022 Edition.
Okay, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay.
So we have a three-two.
That's what you got.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Where are we on? Okay, the mystery of the discussion, okay. Administrative matters, discussion, discussing agenda item request submitted by Christie Pruden regarding speed limit change and speed bumps on Debra Circle.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so an agenda item request was received by resident Christie Pruden on September 8th, 2022. At the September 19th council meeting, council provided consents to add the request to the council agenda for discussion. Uh, Debra Circle, in the parcel map records, is a 50-foot wide roadway with approximately 10 feet of sidewalk slash public right-of-way on each side. 30 feet of the total area is road with on-street parking available in both directions of the street. The speed limit for Debra Circle, as well as all residential streets, is 25 miles per hour. Upon review of the street and neighborhood, is not recommended to add speed bumps and/or reduce the speed limit on Debra Circle. The street is a newer street constructed in accordance with the city's standards and specifications for 50-foot wide streets. The on-street parking of the roadway narrows traffic enough to offer slower speeds and traffic calming, and 25 miles per hour is the prima facie speed for all residential streets in the state of California. So we did include a map of the, of the area and highlighted that section. If you could pull up to that map, please, um, of that area. Um, and we do know that, that Ms. Pruden's husband is in the, is in the audience to to speak on this, and we do have law enforcement in the, in the area, too, as typically speeding issues are usually an enforcement item to address, and so we can go from there.
Okay, so I guess we could take some testimony to begin with.
Yes.
Let's do that. Does anyone like to come up and speak on this item? Please do so. Identify yourself, if you will.
Hello again. Um, I'm just starting to see that Escalon is becoming a place where we don't send our children out on the road to play anymore. Like, you don't see kids outside because they're all in the backyards, they're not communicating, they're, I would not send my kids out on Santa's Lost to save my life when I live there. Um, I thankfully live in a court now, but I just want to, for some perspective, I'm sure it terrifies the officers going around thinking, one day, this is going to happen. Uh, so I would just really love for you guys to look at this matter and take it very seriously in all of our, our streets. The, they're just becoming raceways for everyone to get through town. And, and you know, when I go through Modesto, um, I think there's one by like TJ Maxx and the Applebee's there, they have those big humps. Those look nice, they slow people down. Um, I would not mind, I don't mind driving through there because those people cared enough to put those things there. They, they took a stand, people were speeding, and I wouldn't mind to see those. I don't like the speed bump that was put on Yosemite. I think it's, it's mostly useless. Um, people go around it. I know you guys were trying to rectify that situation, but it doesn't look good. Um, but that's just my two cents. But I just want you guys to notice, you know, the change that we're seeing. I know there's so many generational changes, but I still send my kids outside to play. I'm out there with them. We play ball, you drive down Soltana, go slow down my street because if you don't, I will be, um, letting you know on residence or what have you. But, um, just take, take the issue seriously on this and and hear what they're saying and look into those other issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, come on up, please.
Yes, you can do it. I know it came up here earlier. Could you, uh, who's controlling the PowerPoint?
Me.
Or PDF file, I guess. Would you do me a favor? Could you control and then zoom into the section right there with, uh, just above the court? Just above, yeah, just above the court.
Oh, my gosh. It's 107.
My apologies, I just screwed us all up, so.
It's fine.
It's okay. Not a big deal.
Try this again.
Uh, that should be fine, I guess. So my name is Douglas Pruden. I'm, uh, the husband of Christie Pruden, um, and I know we're all here to talk about speed bumps and possibly reducing speed limits inside residential areas or, you know, even on some of the other, uh, city roads. I just want to start by, uh, saying this. Speeding has been, uh, an ongoing issue, uh, within our neighborhood, uh, kind of since we moved here, uh, and that was, uh, end of 2020, back in probably October 2020. We moved from Concord, uh, it was a better commute from, uh, here to my job at the labs. And, you know, when we first got here, it was almost kind of like, yes, this is it, this is perfect, this is exactly what I've been looking for to raise my family. Um, when I lived in Concord, I lived in a tiny little condominium, and the traffic there was insane. People doing 60, 70 miles an hour down one road, 55 down another, and, you know, these are 35 mile an hour streets. Um, so getting here and being able to bring my family into a suburban-type environment that I have there was very, you know, it was a good feeling. But I quickly realized that there are other people inside our neighborhoods that may or may not have children, uh, and don't understand the importance and the value of their lives or the livelihood of others. Um, so I just want to start off by saying that. We came here the first time after, uh, somebody wrecked in our court from going too fast and careened up and took, went over, hopped the curb, uh, right in front of a basketball court that was out in the street. Uh, we came here to the city council and asked to, uh, bring up a topic, or at least the discussion of implementing a reduced speed limit of 15, uh, and potentially adding speed bumps. Um, we were kind of advised that, you know, they would look into it, and then we were told to work with the Escalon Police Department, uh, and, uh, I believe it was a different chief at that, that point in time. Uh, but I spoke with him and, uh, he, he and I had a very good conversation and agreed to provide more patrols in the area. And we've noticed those patrols in the area. However, the patrols have not ceased the occurrence of people just habitually speeding through that neighborhood. And I know you guys say, you know, the, the design, and I can see by the design that it's intended to slow people down, but it doesn't. It doesn't. It only makes it harder for drivers to actually be able to see what's going on in the roadway and what's going on with them, uh, just with the, how small those roads are. And then when you have people who have lifted vehicles and things like that, I myself, I have a big truck and it sits out in front, parked on the street. Um, but when you have those things and you have children in those areas and you have people doing 25 or 30 or 35, and you have kids that play in that air, that area, and, you know, they're constantly, you know, us as parents, we do our best to watch our children and make sure they're not darting out in harm's way, but there are times and there are instances where, you know, even under the most watchful eye, bad things happen. And my son was recently almost ran over by an individual in a pickup truck driving way too fast. Um, at that point in time during the day, they were driving westbound, uh, on Debra Circle and had the sun in their eyes and didn't see my son until the very last minute, to the point where they had to basically slam on the brakes, the tires were screeching, and had to yank the wheel out of the way just to avoid from, or just to basically avoid hitting my son. And, you know, that's, for any parent, that's a gut-wrenching feeling because it's almost like you feel helpless. If there's, there's nothing that you can really do, especially if you're, you know, a decent distance away, right? Um, I got completely, I had a whole spiel that I was supposed to be reading, but went, went off the cuff. I know my wife, I guess, submitted the video to you guys off of the, uh, the doorbell camera that we have, so I don't know if all of you guys have had a chance to review that, but I mean, even doing 25, I, I mean, I've gone through EVAC and everything else, and I've, I've, I've gone through all of that, and I have yet to squeal my tires, come and do a dead stop for 35. So, I mean, you can imagine that that person had to have been doing a decent amount of speed through that neighborhood. But I just want to really request that the city looks at putting in speed bumps, at least on Debra Street, possibly a stop sign. I mean, there's one on Countrywood Lane, uh, between that and, uh, I think it's Melissa Court. I mean, why is there no possibility to throw a stop sign there? Maybe that helps reduce something. I mean, the last thing we need is to have a child ran over.
Absolutely.
For something to happen.
All right. Todd? Okay, well, thank you for your input.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate your interest, and we do believe it's a serious situation. It's something we're going to look at. I know there's one already on Yosemite. I believe there's a bump there already put in. I don't know what the, uh, effect's going to be on getting that one for you or anywhere else in town. I don't know what the, I don't know, I would like to know more about where communities have done this and what the effect is. I mean, I don't know much about it, to be honest with you. So we'd have to learn. I think staff, we put one in.
One in your section.
Have we had any major complaints about it?
Um, just that it's not long enough.
Okay.
Everybody drives around it.
There you go. Well, maybe we can learn from our mistakes. All right, well, then, doesn't sound like we have any negativity about it. So what would prevent us from doing it?
I just need, I mean, we typically have the city engineer review those type of things, so whatever the direction is, um, upon receiving this agenda item, we spoke with, uh, the city engineer, as well as our public work superintendent and police department. Um, mostly the city engineer regarding speed bumps because that was what was in the request, um, and they didn't recommend it because the, the criteria doesn't, doesn't warrant it, not to say that the council can.
What is the criteria that doesn't get warranted?
Well, it's, it's a typical residential road. The speed that's set in residential is 25. You only typically see 15 miles per hour riding schools, which there's no school in that location, and so that's the, the speed that's designated for.
What's the difference between that and Yosemite?
Um, Yosemite is a wider street, um, and that was at.
Well, that should even make it more dangerous.
I don't recall whether or not we looked into the speed bump or if that was council direction. If council wants us to put a speed bump in that location, we would ultimately go back to our engineer and try to determine where the best spot would be to put one and then bring it back for review.
Okay, well, I'm going to have council go over this, and Roberts want to add something, but I'd, I'd recommend that we take a straw pole, whatever it is, and move forward and try to do something about it because if it's that serious, he's here and his wife's here and people are here, we need to do something for someone who does get hurt. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me throw my two cents worth in today, and with all due respect towards the findings of that, of, uh, this agenda item, um, like, I disagree. Uh, I disagree with them. I decided to go and drive it today, and so I went up and down the street, and I don't know what it is about the neighborhood. Most of the streets, and maybe I'm old, maybe because I have to pay for my own insurance, I don't know what it is, but most of those streets, I didn't feel comfortable going anywhere, anywhere over about 20 miles an hour. I don't know what the deal is with Debra Court. I mean, Debra Circle. But man, I didn't feel right even going over 15, you know? And maybe it's part of it because the cars are there, and again, this is Monday afternoon in the middle of the day, you know, not when everybody's home. I don't know what it was, but I just felt like, you know what? I don't feel right going anywhere over 15 miles an hour in terms of, well, I see a kid running out. I didn't feel right about that at all. Then I'm thinking, this isn't even about your typical conservative driver. This is probably about speeding. And to me, 25 miles an hour? There is no way I want to do 25 miles an hour down that street. I didn't think I would have had control. And if you have people going faster, yeah, there's no way they have control. And yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd back up any kind of a safety, you know, speeding measure, you know, slower the speeding down, any kind of a measure, stop sign, bumps in the street, you know, a speed bump, anything like that. Yeah, I'd strongly advocate. I would strongly advocate that.
Let me ask you a question. On these bumps, they are put in, they're made out of plastic, aren't they? The ones we just installed? Gus, what do you got? What do you know about it?
I know nothing about the bump.
Justin's on it.
Is Justin on it?
Justin.
He's available.
Let's talk to Justin about it. He's the one who installed it, right?
If I may to, sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but I've also talked with a handful of neighbors and close friends of mine inside the neighborhood, and we've all agreed together, you know, we as, you know, the community members there, or at least on that street, have no problem assisting in that funding for those speed bumps, whatever we can do. We just want our kids to be safe.
That makes sense. No, and I hope we don't come to that. All right.
One of my concerns with this is that this road is something that's going to be used to, it's not a shortcut anywhere in town.
It's not a collector.
It's, it's not a feeding main road that goes out to McHenry or out the other way to Santa Fe or anything like that. It's your neighbors in that area that are speeding, and it's just terrible to think that the neighbors in your area don't have that common courtesy to slow down and take care of the neighborhood.
To be honest, 90% of the time, they don't even live on our, our street. They live on other streets. They're going around.
Yep, sounds about right.
That's a shortcut that, that's a shortcut that missed the one-stop sign on Countrywood in Melissa, Yosemite is there? That.
Jesus.
So councilman, let me give you an alternative. Sean Strowman, Yosemite. So we got the speed bump on Yosemite, and people continue to fly down Yosemite with the speed bump. And so some neighbors, we've taken upon ourselves, down on Thaddeus, some neighbors have actually put down the little fluorescent yellow kid with the flag that says, "Slow down, kids at play." We have actually put down some collapsible orange cones that we put on the bike lane when the kids are outside playing. And actually, just this one past Saturday during yard sale day, a gentleman came in and ran over top of our slow kids at play cones, smashed it to pieces. My wife asked him point-blank, you know, if that was a kid, you probably would have got, you probably would have hit and killed the kid. And the response that my wife, or the gentleman gave back to my wife was, well, then it's the kid's damn fault for playing in the street. That's not the Escalon that we all want. And so now we have neighbors who are actually trying, who are trying to protect our kids by even going with these aftermarket products, and people still don't play, pay attention to the aftermarket products. So, Chief, I know it's difficult with the amount of officers you have on board on a daily basis, but something seriously needs to be done throughout the town. I mean, I don't, I think that the speed bump here on Debra Circle might be a deterrent, but I can speak for personal experience that speed bumps will only stop for about a year, and then people will find ways to drive around it, they'll go flying over it, they don't care about their suspension on their vehicle, and so I think it's a bigger issue citywide that we need to look at. We heard from Jamie, we heard from this gentleman on Debra Circle, I can speak to Yosemite. It's citywide, so just food for thought.
And I'd argue right now, they have nothing. If you want to go with a combination of a speed bump as you enter on Debra Circle, stop, stop sign halfway down, speed bump as you round the turn, something, anything like that, I think it's going to be a vast improvement over what we have now. I mean, that, that, yeah, after driving that today, yeah, that's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that on Debra Court, where it, where it feeds out into Debra Circle would be a good spot for a stop sign. And then I think further down, we've, you know, our job is to respond to community members that show up and make a good case, and putting in a speed bump, we haven't had any negative feedback on the other one, except for the fact that it's not big enough and it should be bigger. So I'm not concerned that we'll get a huge pushback if we, you know, slow people down. And so I think tonight, we should move on this. I don't think we need to, or at least move and have the engineer find spots where these can go in, and we should move forward with this.
You want to make that motion?
Are we looking at speed bumps or stop signs?
I think it's a combination.
I think you need a stop sign. I think stop signs deter people. We put that stop sign on.
Well, it slows them down.
Well, yeah, well, we put, we put that stop sign right next to the high school on Stanislaus, and that's worked great. I mean, I think that the people who live there are very happy with that, and so I think a stop sign and a, and a speed bump. Let's hit them both, slow people down.
Yeah, couldn't agree with more than Councilmember Cromick. You know, you get it to the point where you speed bump, stop sign, speed bump, you make it so tedious to be flying down that street, because otherwise, if you just have something on either end, well, they're going to want to go fly in the middle of the street. Just make it so darn tedious. Have them go some other, some other way.
We should probably have the engineer reevaluated, figure out where the sign goes. Well, we know where the sign would go, where the bump would go, because I don't know how.
They go bumps.
Humps, dumps, two?
Bumps.
Well, if that's, why don't we get a feedback from the engineer? The council recommends two with a stop sign.
So I would, yeah, well, I would, do we need a motion or a consensus?
I think we could give a motion.
I think a motion, specifically, Dave, did you want to say something?
I'd like to talk about the speed bump just a quick.
Oh, sure.
With respect to the one that we put on Yosemite that obviously is not large enough, I think we need to make sure we go pretty much from curb to curb, if you will, inside the gutter on the asphalt. I think that we do need to make an allowance somewhere in the middle of both lanes for folks on motorcycles and/or scooters that are running around town, because of speed hump, for the folks on the little, like, 50 and 100 cc scooters and stuff, it's going to put them in the dirt and on the asphalt if they have to go over that speed hump. I don't want an accident with that. I think they need to make sure they take into consideration for those type of folks. They don't need much, foot and a half, 18 inch, 24 inches. It's not even a tire wide, but it's right in the middle of the lane on both sides.
Good idea.
But not so much so that they're so close together that somebody's going to try and straddle the line and go all the way through without hitting the speed bump. Something that, so something needs to be considered for that.
As long as they don't start flying down the street. We've had that too.
I could put that in there.
There's only so much you know, but I'm just thinking, the engineer should take into consideration that, because the one on Yosemite obviously didn't go all the way across and they're running around it, so how do we mitigate that and then maybe look at updating the one on Yosemite as well?
Bad idea.
So I would, I would make a motion to have the engineer look at the spots on, on Debra Circle to put in a stop sign and two speed bumps with a strip available for, like a moped to go through or a motorcycle.
A slot, basically.
A slot, and I would also make the motion that the speed bump on Yosemite be extended from curb to curb or gutter to gutter with also that slot cut for motorcycles.
I'd second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carrie's 5-0.
I should have said this really quick, but can we, is this going to be able to come back on the next meeting or, I mean, you know, we should have a deadline for this.
I'm definitely going to shoot to get it on the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So I should, I should, we should have something for next meeting.
Okay.
And I'll bring it here first to make sure everybody agrees to it before we move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Dominique. Okay. Let's see. Now, let's see. Number seven, consideration request from Shanlar Enterprises to amend the deed restriction providing public access and parking easement on the property formerly known as Prospect. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So you may recall, in February of 2020, the city council adopted a summary vacation and approved the purchase and sale agreement with Shanlar for the area formerly known as Prospect. Shanlar proposed improvements to the area of Prospect and the lumberyard site, including remodel of the existing lumberyard building, two new buildings, landscaping, sidewalks, fencing, underground storm drain facilities, parking lot lighting, and public parking. Shanlar and city entered negotiations on the city-owned alleyway property formerly known as Prospect Street, and it was later transferred to Shanlar for $5,000. In addition to the payment of $5,000, Shanlar agreed to a deed restriction designating the area as public parking to both protect and expand the public parking in the downtown area. Shanlar agreed to construct the public parking area and a walkway for the public's use of this parking space, parking area to First Street. In addition, also agreed to maintain the parking lot and oversee the parking enforcement. Shanlar received a credit of eight spaces towards their private developments parking requirements, has the ability for businesses in their buildings to utilize the parking area, manage, and manages the parking lot, which includes limiting the parking hours while the city maintains its ability to require Shanlar to maintain the lot for public parking. The city attorney and staff negotiated with Shanlar concerning the language of the deed restriction in order to complete the deed restriction in accordance with the previous, previously approved and executed land purchase agreement. The parking agreement was approved by the city council at the August 16, 2021 meeting. City owners will be responsible for signage and enforcement of parking restrictions within the parking easement area. Shanlar is requesting an amendment to Section 3 of the agreement that the responsibility for enforcement of the parking restrictions be the responsibility of the city. If the city council approves the proposed amendment, the city would install required signage and enforce illegal parking within the parking easement area. But Shanlar would continue to have responsibility to maintain the parking area as stated in the recording agreement. The fiscal impacts of this amendment would include the cost for staff time related to dispatching calls, police officers responding to calls, tagging ticketing vehicles, processing of tickets, and potentially the towing of vehicles depending on the circumstances. So the attachments include the recorded deed restriction that was approved back in August of 2021, and then we also included the redlined version, which has those amendments as proposed for item number three regarding parking enforcement. And we do have Mr. Rossi, property owner, in the audience.
Would you like to come up and speak? Mr. Rossi, would you like to come up, please?
Good evening, again. I'm here for any questions that you might have.
I have a few. Oh, wait, is there any questions for anyone else?
Not yet.
None?
Not yet.
Not yet? I have a couple for you. Okay, what you're proposing is that the city takes responsibility for monitoring the parking on that property that is yours now, correct?
No.
No. What do you offer?
Just on the public parking area.
Which is on your property?
Which is.
It's, it is, it is owned by you, but we have the easement over it, so the public parking area is.
We have the easement, but it's technically his property.
Correct.
That was the trade we made when you, when you took that property over. And now you'd like us to basically patrol it, correct?
Just that section.
Okay. The only problem, here's the problem I have with it. Basically, it's going to take us time to deal with that. Something's not in our budget, we didn't anticipate it, so it's going to cost us something. So how do we cover those costs is my question.
Well, you do it already with, with the private parking situation. You have, you have officers out there just today dealing with that same situation.
So our officers are on private property taking care of parking problems?
Correct.
That doesn't seem to make sense. Gus, how's that work?
They're most likely responding when they receive a call for.
Is that something you go and check, or is that something you respond to?
No, we respond to that. If somebody calls it in, then we send officers to respond and check the parking lot.
We do, we do respond to calls, so if it, if it does get called in, our police department does respond. I believe in the last year since we had this agreement, we had six calls.
So what's, what's the difference then? Why, why are we changing?
What's the nature of calls?
The, the calls were not for that specific area, though.
Okay.
There was one, maybe two, maybe one call for that specific area. There has not been any calls based on the two-hour parking, though.
Mr. Rossi, are you, are you running into problems? Like, is there, are you having, is there a reason why you're, like, bringing it up? In other words, like, is there?
Well, we have, we, we purchased the signage, we put all the signs up that were required to do this, and I've, with the complaint-driven system, which we still don't agree with, it puts people in certain situations where there can be retaliation done because you maybe had made a call or maybe you've turned somebody in, and then you get, you get a restraining order put against you. So that's what I've been dealing with, with the last month and a half. Friday, they finally dropped everything. My feelings is, is if I, if I go to enforce the two-hour parking, it's going to become a retaliation situation, and I'm going to be faced with restraining order after restraining order after restraining order. So I, I'm maintaining, I'm maintaining the parking lot and just requesting if council would approve the police department to manage the two-hour parking limit.
Is there anything around there that says that those are public? I think I know where you're talking about. I'm trying to think if there's anything that says public parking. Yeah, yeah. Is there anything that says, that says that's public parking?
I believe the only signs that are up are the two-hour parking signs on eight of the spaces, and I believe there are signs that say no parking between 12 a.m. to 5 a.m., which is.
To me, okay, then to me, I would interpret that as a public parking sign.
That's just like your other signs that are all over town.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that, that's one thing, I was trying to think what was there, but I knew that was there, I couldn't think if there was anything else, like a public parking sign. So, I mean, to me, I think that it'd be a little cleaner if it's regarded as public parking, and therefore, the enforcement of all public parking falls under the police department, so therefore, it'd be cleaner to have that be the same thing.
How would we go about enforcing a two-hour? We don't have parking meter teams of people going around.
Like a complaint base, like a complaint base, just like anything else.
So how are we going to enforce it any better than the current system we have now with waiting for someone to make a phone call for us to be alerted that someone's parked there for more than two hours?
That's probably it.
I'm curious how our police force would be able to enforce that unless someone's going around and marking tires on a regular basis, and that's not what we want our police force to be doing, in my opinion.
But imagine it's going to be a lot cleaner to have a police force respond to a call than a private citizen respond to that call.
I guess what I'm understanding from what he's saying is that he's being targeted. Is that what you're saying?
Well, potentially, it could be.
The, the other incident was something similar, but not, not exactly the same. The, the issue, the issue would be is when, when we did have a confrontation, when they were parked on the private parking, and I explained to them that the public parking is in the back, they turned around and called the police on me, and when the police came out, they said, "Next time this happens again, just call us." So that's what I've been doing. So if we're okay with me just calling the police, then that's what we'll do. But in case of the enforcement, if, if it was just something that the police department would.
Well, since you've gone to that approach, have you had problems?
That's the problem.
Calling the police and having the police deal with it?
I, I haven't had problems. No, I haven't had problems. We have not done anything about the two-hour parking yet.
Oh, gotcha.
Just thinking that people would catch on that, hey, this is two-hour parking, and go from there, but it, it just hasn't caught on.
But if you come out and try to enforce the two-hour parking, and they, they don't know you from Adam, they're going to say, Karen, get back in and do whatever you're doing, I'm not going to listen to you. Okay? Really, realistically, in practice, that's what's going to happen. However, if that call, or you, whoever makes that call, the PD come out, oh, I guess there really was public parking, and therefore, I'm past my two hours.
Well, to me, to me is, is if you don't, if you don't want the two-hour parking, then let's take the signs down.
Yeah, that's the alternative.
Well, I, you, you guys wanted the two-hour parking, it wasn't me.
I think it might be cleaner to just have the, the PD handle those public parking spots, because parking's at a premium around here already, and you also don't want to make it appear that people cannot park anywhere in that area. Let's say if they don't have, if they're patronizing one of the businesses in your area, you don't want to make them think that they can't park anywhere in there, because there really are eight spots where they can, you know? And so to me, I think it'd just be a little cleaner just to go ahead and, again, just like all the public parking everywhere in town, everywhere in any town, the PD is the law enforcement agency that handles it.
Well, just let you know, okay, just because it's a parking lot and it says two-hour
Well, just to let you know, okay, just because it's a parking lot and it says two-hour parking, doesn't mean it's enforceable by me. It has, there has to be other things that I can, it has to be posted in order for me to enforce the law. So to give you an example, you go to Plaza Shopping Center, the Taco Bell, that's private. The only thing I can enforce in there is the handicap parking, because it's state law, okay? But I can't enforce anything else in there.
Right.
But like parking violations type. Are laws broken, like a DUI driver in the parking lot? I can enforce that, but you see, it's in public.
Right. So can you enforce that two-hour parking limit in that lot? Those eight places, can you enforce that?
No, I can't.
Well, then, then the logical inclusion, you pull the signs in.
We were, we actually can, because we have a deed restriction on the property.
Yeah, we can.
Even though it's privately owned, there isn't an exception that allows...
We're not assuming like building property.
So what sign would we, what sign would we have to have up in order for Gus to be able to exercise that?
It would be the towing sign, cars to be towable by Escalon Police Department, no parking, and you give the restriction enforceable by Escalon Police Department. Your car would be towed, and then you have to put the towing information. Who would tow it if they happen to go out there and it's...
I believe all that signage is up.
Yeah.
Isn't that already there?
Some of that's already there.
So if there's a complaint right now, if you make that call, we already have the ability to enforce that.
That's correct.
And move a car right now with how it sits.
You got it.
If there's a phone call to Chief and his team, then they can go out and investigate that if there's a complaint. I don't want to turn our police department into meter mains, basically checking parking spots. That's my fear.
I'm with you.
Well, you know, I'm not asking for that either, I'm just trying to say, though, that if somebody, the worst part, you're probably going to be the one calling. I can't think of who else is going to call.
Well, again, it's public parking.
Yeah.
Why do I have to be the person to be watching that on a regular basis if that's what city council wanted was two-hour parking?
Right. But just like every place else in town that has a parking restriction on it, there almost invariably, somebody's going to be calling into the PD.
But that was the give and take at the time when the agreement was made, when there was a give and take with how much it was going to cost to convert Prospect into now-developed land.
There you go.
And parking and the restrictions with the deed, that was all worked out by everybody at that time.
Mm-hmm.
That was the benefit to your development, was that agreement. Everybody agreed to that. So I'm not sure that there wasn't a benefit necessarily now that if we changed that, then that kind of kills the situation that happened two years ago whenever we made that agreement.
And it was made two-hour parking so that the employees wouldn't park there all day, wasn't that right? So other people could park and they'd have to leave.
I think so.
Customers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, is it, how difficult is it to call? I guess that's what you're doing already, to call the police.
For my piece, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So if you call for your piece, just trying to think a way to work this out, if you call for your piece, well, would you even bother calling about those eight spots?
It's a complaint base, any business in there can make a phone call.
I just don't want a city council member to come, pull in there, and expect to have a parking spot, and they're twiddling their thumbs, waiting for a parking spot, and there's no parking spot.
Park down the street they can want.
And then they say, "Hey, what's going on, Rossi? Why aren't you taking care of this?"
Oh.
I'm just a senator.
So currently, it's our understanding that the cars that are parking in the two-hour parking are parking for the day.
Okay.
So it is mostly either employees or business owners that are parking in the two-hour parking, and they're not staying two hours.
Are you receiving a lot of complaints about it?
We haven't, we haven't received any complaints.
Okay, thank you.
I can start tomorrow, and you'll have it for the next...
Yeah.
Then we'll address it, then we'll address it. And if it comes in, we'll address it.
It's an elephant in the room.
So is it okay if you call the PD, and let's say those eight spots, you call the PD, and they come out, what can they do? Chief, what can you guys do?
Well, you're going to have to mark the tires, because you don't know what time they got there.
Right.
You're going to have to go back and hit the tire. It's a nuisance.
Yeah.
It's a nuisance for them to have to waste their time looking at.
Right, right.
If people don't want to park, if people parked there for more than two hours, people need to complain, and then we'll have to deal with that, but or take out the two-hour parking.
Yeah.
I just take the two-hour parking.
What if we just took the two-hour parking out?
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, that takes away the benefit that we had with the agreement we made at the time to try and provide public parking for that area by giving up Prospect, and now we've made employee parking.
Good point.
For that facility, and there's no benefit to the city, to the agreement we made to allow us to have those eight spots, so I'm not one to...
No, I agree with that.
...to give up the spots for permanent parking for employees.
So what's the solution for the people that parked over two hours? How do we deal with that? That's the dilemma.
Right.
And what we have is we don't want to spend our police time over there playing meter maid.
No.
At the same time, we want the two-hour parking, so people have an opportunity to park, at the same time, they're abusing it, and how do we stop them from abusing it?
You know, I don't know if you've ever, these guys have ever...
There is a way.
Where's the way?
There is a way.
Their employees and their tenants of the facility.
No, there's a way. You put meters there, and they pay to park there, and that will stop the two-hour abuse, and guess what? It's over. We don't have to be there, they don't pay, then somebody calls, you get a red tag, then he goes and gives them a ticket for not paying the meter. Plus, you get revenue to pay the police's time, they're going over there messing with it. Put the damn meters there.
Well, and that way, you're not Karen and being a Karen either, you know? That may not be a bad idea.
Sounds like a good solution. I think it's a practical solution.
Yeah, I mean...
And you want, that'll stop them, because after they start paying for it, they won't...
That's not a bad idea.
But then, but then, what effect does that have on the customers going to the different businesses if we're trying to bring business in?
What does it have to do with anything? They're going to park in a spot, they got, they pay for the meters there, there for two hours max, boom. After that, you get a red, it comes up red, they know they're in violation, they either move or somebody turns them in, but we're not going to babysit that thing.
Okay. Well, let's start off with, given the phone call to police department.
That's fine.
And we'll build a history there to where then you can see how often it does happen, and then maybe the police department can voice our opinion to the local businesses that abuse it and see if that will work.
That, we could try that.
Well, and I was going to mention, you know, I don't know if you've ever been at parking medestory or any place like that, you know, but you park, you're gone for a while, you come back, all of a sudden, you see your tires chalked.
Yep.
Even that's just a little, okay, they're watching, you know, even a little thing like that.
I don't want to get involved.
No, not you, I'm just saying, if you're, you know...
You were going to say something?
Put a parking meter, that'll stop all your problems real quick.
Before we start money, I think we...
What I'm going to do, what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk to my officers. Let's go with education. I'll send my officers down to the area, the barber shop, all the businesses downtown, and explain to them that those parkings are lots are just for two hours, it's not for employees, it's not for the barbers or anything like that, or any other people that they're having.
Any other people.
Transmission shop and all that stuff, so we'll go that route, and then go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And in the past, we've sent out letters to businesses as well, so our department can work with the police department on the education.
I mean, if it's obviously, if it's actually, for the most part, employees of the businesses within that area, then we should be able to determine who those folks are and track that down, and at some point in time, maybe you roll that into lease agreement issues at some point about parking as well.
I just don't want our police department tied up with more than they've got to do already.
I would agree.
And if they are, I want to be compensated for it, because we're short on money, we're short on men, it's enough.
Parking is not on a priority list for me.
Exactly. All right, is there any more discussion? We're good, everybody's good? All right, so we're going to basically let it ride and see what happens?
Okay, we're going to move on.
All right, let's move on to council communications. All right, Councilman Crummich.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think we've had some good discussion tonight about a number of topics. One thing I want to talk about right now, just, is the issue of the light on Brennan and 120 and the letter that we're going to talk about writing. I think we could probably do more than that. I think if, you know, fighting against Caltrans is kind of like fighting against the rail, you know, the railroad, VNSF, and, you know, they've just got, they're just so much more powerful, and it's almost like, we know what's right, we know what's good for us, and we go talk to them, and we tell them, "This is what you need to do, we need your help," and they can just not respond for 50 years, because they don't have to, because we almost can't do anything about it. We're kind of powerless. But I think we need to try to step up the game a little bit as far as getting that light out there and the safety of people. So I think tonight I would like to, I don't know if we already did it, but, you know, ask for support to get a letter to Caltrans that all of us five can sign requesting, I know they're doing the study, but requesting a light there. And I think on top of that, if we were to send out to the community a, some sort of petition or something saying, "Would you like a light on 120 and Brennan?", you know, yes or no? And if we can sort of get, come at them with maybe some more information, and we say, "Hey, we've got, you know, 500 people that said we want a light here," or however many we could get, might be a way to sort of motivate them, like a petition.
Councilman Crummich, that petition should be submitted to our legislators, so they are the ones that have the power to get these guys to move. Somebody like Florrie and also like Aigman.
Yeah.
There are two representatives in the area, and if we got the letter to them with the signature you're proposing is a good idea.
Let's try to get a petition or a mailer or something.
That's not a bad idea, but it's going to take some time, but that...
Sure, I know.
That would get you more reaction than if we just sent a letter with our names on it.
I got you, yeah, so we could send that to our higher, whatever, authorities.
Exactly.
So are we writing a letter? Is that already done?
I can have a letter drafted to be signed by all of the council members requesting a traffic signal at that location.
Yeah.
And could I request or get some support for a petition to be sent out somehow?
I'd support that.
Water bill, you can do the water bill.
Do a water bill one?
Well, we can move forward on doing some type of petition, and I'll work on...
I know we've done surveys, you know, like the monkey, whatever, what was that? What was that thing called?
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
I'm not just here to complain, I'll go door to door.
There you go.
All right.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of community support for this, and if we get some names and some numbers to back it up, rather than us just going, "Hey, please, Caltrans, help us out," like, make it go life and death here, people, you know, and so...
Good idea.
That's all I got.
Yeah, sounds good.
Councilman Hagan.
I would support what Peter's saying. I think that's a good idea moving forward. I think we had some real good discussions tonight, and that's all I really have to say for right now.
Thank you. Councilman Billinger?
I'll keep it brief, echo the same sentiments as the other two gentlemen down here about the Brennan 120, glad we can get that moving along. Congrats to everybody involved with the wine and beer stroll that we had. It looked like it was a really good event, I enjoyed myself, as well as looked like everybody else was, so congrats to those that put all those efforts into making that event happen, that's, those kind of events that really do help our community just come together, and that's all I've got.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Sweth.
Yeah, no, again, no, great idea, Councilmember Crummich, yeah, I think you do both, you know, you do the petition, then you do the letter from us, and see where it goes. By the way, they're also on Facebook today, I think that there's a gentleman, I know he works for Sankey County, oh gosh, Public Works, and he works for District 10, Caltrans, quite a bit, and he also suggested a, he had the link where you could go on and complain or make a remark, or whatever you want to call it, regarding this situation as well. So if you go onto the Escalon Facebook, yeah, Escalon Residence Page, one of the topics, maybe, did you start it? Did you start that one? I can't remember. Anyway, it's there, it's there also, so I think you do all those things. Question, was a recreation meeting this last week was canceled due to unforeseen circumstances, or was it canceled because of lack of agenda items? There's some confusion about that.
It was unforeseen circumstances, and it's my apology that the notification itself said lack of items. They did have an item, it's not time-sensitive, but they did have an item.
Okay, all right, okay, very good. Hey, another thought, maybe we ought to get a consensus on this one, too. Dominique, since you're working on the code of ethics, you know, and you're going to be including language regarding education, really good questions being brought up. What are the enforcement mechanisms? If there is a code of ethics, either violation, either a Brown Act violation or behavioral, clear-cut behavioral violation, does it trigger a censure? Does it trigger? What does it trigger? And I don't know the answer to that question, but, you know, unfortunately, you would almost think that if you have a code of ethics, ultimately, somebody has to ask, well, what happens if you don't follow them? And I think that if council wouldn't have, I don't know if council would have a problem just looking into that kind of language to include in that as well, I think that'd be a really good idea going from here on out. What do you guys think?
I think that's a good idea, like, yeah, we have a code of ethics, but what, if it's broken or we violate it, what are the recourse, you know?
If we're going to go through and look to make some adjustments and amendments to it, I would agree with those two gentlemen as well.
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
Okay with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. And if you had a chance to come out to the pumpkin carving day yesterday that was called Chamber Commerce, what a great day. A lot of kiddos had carved some great pumpkins, had some great costumes out there, and it was a really good feel-good event. I applaud the Council on Chamber Commerce for putting that on, and don't forget, this Thursday's going to be another farmer's market, so let's go out and support our local farmer's market, okay? I know it's been under many manifestations over the years, many people have tried to get it off the ground, this one seems to be working, let's keep it working, and get it out there this Thursday evening over on Main Street, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. Recently, we talked about the city of, I think it was Newman, that had opposition to, I think it was SB 1083, the new garbage thing, and they voted against it not to pass it. And so I talked to their mayor, and I asked him what they were thinking, and he told me that they were going to wait and see what happens, but they're tired of the mandates. So one of the ideas we floated was to talk about getting small cities together and start a small cities coalition, and start addressing some of the unfunded mandates for small towns. So they'd be like Newman, Gustine, Waterford, Yousen, Escalon, and maybe we can get a coalition together, working with the League of Cities, in order to get the attention of the state of California, realize not all cities are alike, and we could start to do something here that we could actually afford to do when it comes to building senior housing or other things like that. Our hands are tied, and it's frustrating, but if we had a coalition, I think maybe we might get their ear. So that's one thing I wanted to discuss with everybody, and we'll get into it later more, once I contact the mayor over there again, and see what steps we want to take to try to move forward on something like that. But I think it would benefit all the smaller towns, because we have no voice, we have zero. Roxanne, okay, the property, there's an industrial piece of property that's been purchased by Mr. Yates and referred to this evening about their employees, is there's a property in front of that as well, and that property is zoned for commercial, I believe, isn't it? Right. Well, the holdup on that property is there's no way for them to get rid of their sewers, and we've granted permission to the one gentleman who wants to build out there that industrial-type project, right to put a septic tank in temporarily until we get the facility over there. What I want this council to think about is funding the jackboying underneath the highway to get that thing going. What I want this council to think about is funding the jackboying underneath the highway to get that thing going. As soon as they build those homes there, we'll have the sewer line to the corner of Brennan, and I'd like to see us talk about finding funding to go underneath the road and get that thing going. That thing is going to bring us revenue without a major impact. We'll be able to have some good money coming in from development, we'll have some new stores, we'll have some new buildings. Give us a chance to grow in an area that we all kind of accept, without overdoing it with the houses. Now, we will pick up approximately 75 houses on the corner by Foresheim, if they actually follow through with the Murphy brothers and get that going. But that's, we haven't just got there yet, because we're still going through the process with LAVCO of exiting the property. But once that's in place, I think we should focus on trying to find funding. If we can get that jackboying done, it's going to bring us a potential of a, pretty much a large development of commercial buildings. And I think it would behoove us, and I think we'd get money on the money back, plus what we put in, we can also get interest on that. So if it's possible, it's around a million plus, million something, million and a quarter, I think. But it's something we should exercise and look into.
Mayor, I have a kind of question for you. So I thought the discussion was that the developer is responsible for bringing out utilities to their property.
They absolutely are.
And you're talking about us doing it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because otherwise, it's not going to happen for a long time. And what I'm looking at is trying to get some revenue in, and stores in, that would help the community, and that's one way we could consider doing it.
Well, I think I said just exactly what you said at some meeting, where I said the city, you know, should be responsible for putting utilities where things are, but so, yeah, I got no problem with that.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
I can convince the citizens of this town to go along with floating a million dollars for a few businesses.
It's not a process that's going to happen like a snap of the finger, so...
I'm not saying that, I'm just making a comment.
Right, it's going to be, it's just a situation where we're going to have to look at some out-of-the-box ideas to get things done.
That's worth looking into.
Absolutely, I think it's a shot, it's something we have to look at. Or we can just sit here and do nothing and have the same consequences. It's up to you guys, I mean, it's something we should look into, though.
It gets tough, because then you're thinking about, okay, well, now we're not going to have development pay for itself, and now we're going to set that precedent, albeit, it's with a commercial development. But then we set that precedent that, no, we will go and pay for development. I got a thing about that one, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, it's something to think about. I would like staff to look at some possibilities of funding that. So do we have a consensus, we at least let staff start to mill the idea around?
It's not city money. If you can find grant money for it, not city dollars for that, no, that's development. Those businesses get the revenue and the profit off of that, not any of the citizens in this town. I'm not interested in spending any city money on developers' development.
If I may just clarify the agenda item right now, just an item as to whether or not we want to agendize it for a future item discussion. I appreciate the comments, but we should not get to the merits of the issue as much as do we want to have staff bring it back for an agenda?
I would consent to discussing it further.
Yeah, I'm not ready to agendize yet, that's a big thing.
We have three of us who would like to move forward on it. All right, that's out of the way. We did talk about that. I guess that's it, that's all I really have. And this evening, we're not going to have a closed session, we're going to report, there's nothing to report, and so we'll begin in our meeting at this point. Good night.